Welcome to the, oh, the month day 2025 meeting of the commission.
Ball card.
This is the July 17th, 2025 meeting of Baltimore City Planning Commission. I'm John Laria, the commission chair. Seated next to me is Stephanie Smith, who is sitting in for Director Ryer as our executive secretary. Welcome. Madam Executive Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Bullock.
Present.
Commissioner Griffin.
Present.
Commissioner Horn. Commissioner Jolene.
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 Present.
Commissioner McCouch.
Present.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair Stevenson.
Present.
And of course, Mr. Chair.
Present, thank you. Commissioners, we have the minutes to approve from the June, help me out here, sorry, 26th meeting of the commission. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, opposed nay. Minutes are approved. We will now turn to items on the consent agenda. The first set are the CIP transfers. We continue to look forward to and appreciate the continued improvements in the CIP process. Today's CIP transfers are from the meetings of July 2nd and July 16th, and in each case, the staff has identified that they are, even though they're transfers, they're consistent with the CIP. My practice has been to call attention to those that are not consistent with the CIP, which sometimes need a little more explanation. But both of those are consistent with the CIP. So I will ask for a motion to approve the transfers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you. Okay. The next consent agenda item. Madam Executive Secretary, would you please read it for the record?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Minor subdivision final plans, One North Wolf Street, Believe in Tomorrow Children's Foundation, located in the 13th district. Minor change in final design approval planned unit development number 125.
Is there, so we don't have a presentation on this, correct? But I do have a question. It may just date from my relatively recent arrival. I was just trying to understand, is this a minor change in final design approval under the, what is actually going on here in this item? Because it's in a PUD. And I guess from experience, typically, minor changes, final design approvals, et cetera, do come to the commission in some form. Help me out, understand where we are procedurally with respect to this item.
So Austin Davis is the staffer for this, but it is my understanding that the major amendment for, or that the, this had previously come to Planning Commission for a similar, so it was a minor update. But I believe there may be somebody here who wishes to speak.
Oh, is there, that would be great.
Do you want to speak on this item?
Not on Wolf Street. I want to speak on Alcon Trolley.
Okay, yeah, well.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, appreciate it. Justin, can you get Austin? He might, I don't know this one very well.
We'll just wait a moment so as not to make a total mess Oh, good. You just introduce yourself for the record, please.
Yes, Austin Davis, subdivision manager here in Department of Planning.
Thanks, Mr. Davis. Sorry to drag you out here. I just have, I have a question, maybe others do as well. I'm just trying to understand the sort of procedural posture of this item. It's, it is on a consent agenda, but it is also a minor change final design approval. And I'm just trying to understand what we're doing here and why it's on the consent agenda versus on the regular agenda. I don't have any objection to the underlying item based on my review, but some context would help.
Yeah, so if I recall, the PUD goes back about three or four years. And two years ago, the design was slightly modified. And albeit in alignment with the plans submitted today, this is just a very, very technical slight change from what I believe was approved, that Eric had approved in the PUD from a couple of years ago. We did notice that there was a slight inconsistency between the two, and Eric had originally had this set for a regular agenda item, but then upon his review of his own files, he saw that the change is just very technical in nature and that the use of that, of that large structure in the corner is still in accordance with what the PUD had reviewed two years ago.
I can also say that somebody from the Atkins team is on Webex and has raised their hand if you'd like to.
Okay, so let's recognize that person.
It's Caroline Hecker.
Carol, Ms. Hecker, can you hear us?
I've requested.
Yes, I can, hello, hello.
Ms. Hecker, could you, this really just may be for me because I missed the earlier items since I wasn't on the commission. But can you just explain the context of this item and exactly what it is we are acting on today?
Yeah, absolutely. So back in 2021, we came in front of the Planning Commission for a minor change to the PUD to change this, this block of the PUD from what had originally been townhouses to an apartment building. And that was approved in 2021. This approval today, there's a subdivision, minor subdivision that's part of it that basically carves off a piece of that, that apartment building, which will become the new Believe in Tomorrow Children's Foundation. And then the rest of it will remain an apartment building. And from the, like, the exterior, it's all going to look like one big building. But it is, there were some, some slight tweaks that, that needed to occur to accommodate the fact that it's going to be technically two parcels. And so we, I think there were maybe some windows that shifted, some, some minor exterior changes. But I think the planning staff, as Austin said, you know, agreed that the changes were minor enough that it didn't really merit a full hearing.
So I'm, so I'm looking at the plan. And it's obviously a sort of a city block. And then you've got, in the left corner, it looks like that's the subdivided parcel, this sort of like a quarter-ish of the block?
Yeah, left if you're on the, what is that?
It's Plan Left, yeah, it's Plans Left. I guess it's actually north or north.
Yeah.
And, and the apartment building you described, is the four-story building that's already on there? Or is that the, is that the specific use that you described?
The, the, there's an apartment building that exists that's on Block B, which is to the north of this, of Block A, which is the site that's the subject of this approval. I think the four-story building that you're looking at is the proposed apartment building that would be on Block A, that it's bounded by Wolf Street, Washington, and Baltimore Street on the south.
So.
I don't have, I can't see what you're looking at.
No, no, you got it. No, you had it exactly right. It's, the building I'm looking at is on Wolf, and as you said, Washington and Baltimore. And then I think it's Fairmont, which runs sort of mid-block. But what's there today?
Nothing, it's just a big grass field.
Okay. And is there a development plan for the balance of the block? Or sort of say, three-quarters of the block? It's not, it's not shown on the plan?
Oh, I think the plan, and again, I can't see what you're looking at, but I think the plan shows the whole block. Like that, that, the apartment building, it will cover, the, the new structure will cover the whole block. It'll be built in two phases. The first part will be the Believe in Tomorrow Children's Foundation, which is, like you said, like a quarter of the block. And then the remainder will be the rest of the apartment building, which will cover the rest of the block.
Yeah, it's a little, I mean, I don't want to hold everybody up. It's a little confusing only because the, the, what it shows is a four-story building in the lower left with amenity area, et cetera. And the plan that I'm looking at, which is the development plan, has nothing on the rest of the block, just some topo lines. And then, but there are renderings from a prior approval, I think, that, that show a seemingly very large apartment building. It's just a little confusing to me. But I'll educate myself afterwards. I don't see any reason to hold it up. But I'd like to just understand, just so I know. So maybe we can follow up on that afterwards, and that's fine.
Yeah, the elevations are the rest, whereas the plans, in the plans that there are just specific to the subdivision. So the PUD plans are separate from this specific minor subdivision/technical change. And those elevations illustrate the rest of the development.
All right. Okay, well, this still remains a consent item despite my questions. I apologize. Is there a motion to approve this item from the commission?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you very much. Okay. Madam Executive Secretary, next item on the regular agenda, please.
Absolutely. City Council Bill 25-0076, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two-dwelling units in the R8 zoning district. Variances 3224 Alcon Trolley Terrace, 7th District. Justin Walker presenting.
Good afternoon, everyone. Justin Walker with DOP here on City Council Bill 2576 regarding a conditional use conversion of 3224 Alcon Trolley Terrace. So again, this will convert a single family to two-dwelling units. Justin Walker staffing the bill. Petitioner Chase Hoffberger is present here. This property is located in the West Planning District, where Truke Bolden is the community planner. So just taking a look to get us oriented here, it is just across the street from Druid Hill Park in the Alcon Trolley Parkwood neighborhood statistical area. Taking a look at the lot there, it is a 15 by 142-foot lot. Its last authorized use was for a single-family attached dwelling. And looking at the satellite image there as well. And then going to street view, the proposal would keep the facade with just improvements to the windows and doors. No major changes to the exterior of the structure. And looking at our required findings here, this is strictly a conditional use conversion. The minimum lot area, 1,500, is required for two units in the R8 that is satisfied with the lot area. And of course, this is another situation where the zoning administrator's letter was drafted before Council Bill 006, or what is now ordinance 2515, took effect, which strikes the required parking for any structures with three or fewer units. So this staff report does include an amendment to strike Section 2 of the bill, which is the parking variance. And of course, the conversion standards also no longer apply. So again, the only required findings here are for deconditional use. And staff does not find any reason why a two-dwelling-unit building at this site would be any more impactful than in any other property in the R8 zoning district. We don't believe it would negatively impact the public health, safety, or welfare in its construction or operation. And just to run through our equity assessment, this would return what is a currently vacant structure to productive use, providing two housing units in the community. The project has received a letter of support from the new Alcon Trolley Terrace Association. And they were obviously notified in addition to the required posting on the property, which was met. So staff is recommending adopting the findings and approving with the following amendment, striking Section 2 of the bill, which grants the parking variance that is no longer necessary.
Thank you. I just have one sort of preliminary technical question. The Alcon Trolley Terrace letter in the site is addressed to the BMZA. Is it right that the BMZA has no role in this? Is just because they thought it should go there, which is fine, it's, the other letter's in the record. But I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Yes, so that's, that's a common situation where people believe they're affiliated to the BMZA, but the zoning code, code holds the conditional use for residential conversions in R7 and R8 to be a required city council ordinance.
Right, okay. Are there any questions first for staff? Before we, see, I know we have one gentleman who I think wanted to be heard on this. Just a moment, sir. Anybody on the commission have questions for staff? Okay, please stand by. Are, is there others here who wish to speak, sir? I know you do, and the applicant? Anybody else? Okay. Let's hear from this gentleman first, in case you have questions the applicant can answer. And so please come on up. And if you'll say your name and any affiliation for the record. You have two minutes.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
I've never been at one of these, so thank you for listening to me.
Of course.
Give me the opportunity. My name is Jude Adu. I am a resident of Baltimore City, former Foreign Service Officer with USAID, recently fired, and the neighbor of 3224. I live in the corner house, 3226 Alcon Trolley Terrace. I guess I'm here because I'm quite concerned. I'm not really, I guess, on the first instance. The Neighborhood Association, which I'm not a member of, but was at some time, had agreed that they weren't actually going to be allowing any more multi-dwelling structures to be built. So I was quite concerned. I'd actually asked the president about purchasing the building because it's abandoned. I brought pictures to kind of demonstrate that. The back door is open, water's been going in it. I mean, for the past two years, I pay $1,000 a month heating bills. It's got mold, yeah. So I'm not really clear why they would have approved a, that the building be converted to apartments would be the first thing. I think that the building needs to be sold, at least be a single-family property because we have a high eviction rate in the neighborhood. I mean, I'm not a layer, so I don't want to speak about fair housing. But I'm sure we have a pretty high eviction rate. We have high drugs in the neighborhood. The neighborhood is actually finally just being, I would say, sort of making a turnabout. There's a renovation plan certainly for the, for the, the park. The zoo renovations have been completed. We had a new anchor building that was actually renovated called, I can't remember what it's called now. Anyway, it's on Gwynn's Falls and Alcon Trolley Terrace, beautiful building. Anyway, so that's all I really wanted to say is I just think that you need to, I would ask the commission to study this a little bit more closely because it's, it's already a nuisance for me because I've had to live next to it. I've owned my house for 15 years. When I bought the house, there was, I think they were sister and brother living in that house. The house was inhabited. I don't know what's happened, but again, this is kind of what it is. I don't know if I should leave this with you, or, I don't know.
Yeah, no, no, you're doing great. Thank you, we appreciate your coming. Please, anything you have to leave, please leave with the staff, with Ms. Audette. And I think, are there questions for this gentleman now? Or should we hear first from the applicant? Okay, let's, just, you can have a seat, and we may ask you to come back up.
Okay.
And the applicant is here, please come on up. Identify yourself if you would for the record.
Sure, thank you. Chase Hoffberger, on behalf here of Via Companies LLC. Thanks for your time. Just to say a bit about the property owner and the project itself. Via Companies is a husband-and-wife duo, Jay and Bruni Stevens. They live in, they live nearby on McDonough Road. They purchase houses that are vacant and fix them up. I think that one sort of good selling point for this particular proposal in light of the neighbor whose name I, I'm sorry, I don't remember, in light of his opposition is that the proof's sort of in the pudding right down the street, that Via Companies fixed up a vacant property on Whittier and Pleasant Oaks. And it's now a really good productive piece of housing for two families that are able to rent in the area. I know that there's some concern about renters. I don't personally think that's justified. Renters make for great neighbors as well as homeowners. And in this case, where the market sort of allowed for the deterioration of this property, nobody wanted to buy it, the purchase by Bruni and Jay, with the intent to rehabilitate it, bring housing, productive housing to the, to the block, is something to be commended. So we did engage with the Neighborhood Association. This block is actually distinct because the current, former, and president emeritus all live on this block. So there, it is perhaps the most Neighborhood Association emboldened block in all of Baltimore City. And, and we worked with them on a configuration that worked for them. And, and we agreed to a rental property agreement that provides our contact information for the property management company, trash and recycling commitments, rat and nuisance abatement commitments, and landscaping commitments. We, we originally proposed a four-dwelling configuration, one, for one apartment unit per floor, which is to some extent in line with the planning department's perspective and view on these types of conversions. But we're told that wasn't going to be desirable by the neighborhood. And we quickly said, all right, well, what, what works for you? And how can we make this math work so that the rehabilitation makes sense? So, so we found something that, that meets the consensus and are looking forward to rehabilitating this property and turning into something that's hopefully not a nuisance for the neighbors, doesn't jack up their electricity and heating bills, and is a productive piece of housing in Baltimore City right along the park. So happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Can we just get an image back of the facade of the, of the block? I think we have it.
And one more thing, just as a point of clarification to the letter of support, which is addressed to BMZA, it does acknowledge that this requires legislation. It's not a misconception about the scope.
Yeah, no, I, I saw that at the end. I was just raising it. And, you know, frankly, I would just say to you, to the extent you're soliciting these things, and since it is going to go to the council, you might want to have them readdress the letter to the, to the committee, et cetera.
I will, I did ask, and they didn't respond. And sometimes it's just not worth hammering.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, that's fine. But I was asking the question more from the perspective of understanding exactly where the authority lay here.
Correct.
I think we've all established that. So what was, the original proposal was, was four units, meaning, just out of curiosity, what's four units look like in that house as opposed to two? How do you lay them out?
Well, there's one unit in the basement and one on each floor.
And now, and now it's.
It would be one, there's one unit in the basement and first floor, and one unit on the second and third floor. Correct.
Gotcha.
John, can I add on that question?
Of course you may.
In the four units, are you, your microphone? In the four units, sir, were you going to require a variance on unit size?
It would have required variances and things like that. And now we, right, exactly. We don't need any variances.
You're good with God.
Does it change the, I'm curious, only because, the reason I'm asking this question is because, you know, when you have conversion opportunities for large houses, you can make them into two, you make them into four. In this case, you've done two because of the discussion with the community?
Correct.
I'm just trying to imagine, because I'm just a lawyer, what is the, what happens inside that's different in terms of access to the different units if you go four units versus two units? How does that work?
Well, I believe right now there would be a single, two-stair requirement, two, two points of egress would be necessary. You'd need to have sprinkler system and things like that. So you go from basically the residential building code to the commercial building code. And so it's a much larger deal to make such a conversion occur.
Yeah.
And there's obviously less space, you know, per. Sometimes we, we bring up that if you have two, if you have two units, you can put four bedrooms in there and you have eight bedrooms. If you have four units, you can put two bedrooms in there and you have eight bedrooms. And it's all the same. But with two units, certainly, you get a little bit more space per person.
Understood, okay. Are commissioners' questions for the applicant or for the gentleman who testified a few moments ago? We could certainly ask him to come back up. Questions? No, none. Sir, did you want something else? Did you want to say something else quickly in response?
I see the question.
Please, you have to come up, sorry.
I have a question for Chase.
Sure.
On the, the Whittier Street property, I wasn't sure that they did it on it. The property was, and I don't know if you know this, but the question was, the property is currently vacant, has been vacant for some time. So I'm just curious, from, I don't know, the date of the rehabilitation, maybe in the last two years, three years, I don't know, remember, something short. the last two years, three years, I don't know, remember, something short, how many times has it been rented? Look at what's the turnover been? Are they kind of long-term renters? Are they, those, just those kind of, what is the profile of your average renter? And how long has that property been vacant now?
The one on Whittier is vacant?
Yes.
My understanding is it's not.
Regardless, I don't have the answers.
If you know, you know.
I don't have the answers to that question.
Okay, understood. I'm sorry. All right, thank you. All right. If there's no further questions, is there a motion regarding the staff report, which remember is to approve with the, striking the off-street parking variance simply because it's unnecessary under now superseding law? Is there a motion to that effect? To accept the staff report as recommended?
Yes. I have a motion to accept the staff report.
Make your phone. Motion to adopt the findings and approve with the amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion on the motion?
Just going to say, here, the neighbors' complaints, but I mean, this is how the property gets into productive use. To, I recognize vacancy is really disruptive and negative, but this is how you get the property into productive use, so.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, Madam Executive Secretary, you call the roll for this, please.
Yes. Commissioner Allen.
Approve.
Commissioner Bullock.
Approve.
Commissioner Griffin.
Approve.
Commissioner Jolyn.
Approve.
Commissioner McCouch.
Approve.
Commissioner Williams.
Approve.
Vice Chair.
Approve.
Mr. Chair.
Approve. So I was approved. Sir, let me just tell you, because we've talked a bit about like who's doing what and what authority. The authority here is in the city council. Our decision today is a recommendation to the city council. It'll go to the city council's land use committee at a date probably hasn't been scheduled yet, I guess, but it will be. So they're the ultimate authority, the committee, and then ultimately the council. So if you wish to be heard on this, you can go speak with them, but when they decide, it's final. When our work here is a recommendation. So I just wanted to explain to you and appreciate your coming out and appreciate your commitment to being on all controls terrace. And hopefully, this will turn out well for everybody. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Executive Secretary, next item, please.
Yes, item number six, City Council Bill 25-0071, zoning, conditional use, excuse me, conversion of single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district. Variance is 15 East West Street, 11th District. Again, Justin Walker presenting.
Good afternoon again. Justin Walker, DOP, on another conversion, this one at 15th, 15 East West Streets. So this would again be a conversion from single-family to two dwelling units. There are going to be, there is going to be a single variance required here for the lot area. A petitioner and owner, Bashir Abdallah, is present. And this is in the South District where Jasmine Kimmel is the community planner. So taking a look here, it is over in Fed Hill, south side of the city. And looking at the plot here, highlighted in red, it is a 15 by 93-foot lot, and it is zoned R8 as we go to the satellite image. And dropping down to the street view, I'll go through a bit of some history with the property. The appeal for this conversion was initially submitted to the BMZA, as we mentioned earlier. Occasionally, there's confusion of where the authority lies. The building currently has a commercial first floor, which was authorized through a neighborhood commercial establishment, which is approvable by the BMZA. And that was approved in March when they came through. But the board found, of course, that they do not have the authority to approve the conversion. So this is a situation where even though there is a commercial unit on the first floor and a residential on the second, the code still considers that to be a single-family dwelling because there's only a single dwelling unit. And from our understanding, the building is already constructed as one commercial on the first floor and two dwelling units above. But when the applicant went to get their rental license, they found there was some conflict with the zoning classification.
So it's the building on the left, right?
Yes, the corner lot, far, far left building.
Maybe this is an old image of the prior commercial, like, it did look like it was built with a historic commercial facade.
Yes.
Maybe the side door, maybe the side.
Yeah, so we can.
It's got a sign.
Oh, yeah, I do see it, okay.
Okay, so here, we can take a look at the side facade, where there is a secondary entrance through the side there, for better or worse. But it does have an authorization and a history of lawful authorization as a non-residential use, so therefore it is eligible and was approved by the BMZA for a neighborhood commercial establishment, for a retail goods establishment.
Could I get a quick clarification?
Yes.
On, so today, it exists as a first-floor retail.
Yes.
With a second-floor, single unit above.
Well, that's how it's classified. It physically is built as two units with.
On the second and third floor, with a first-floor retail. And in the future, this anticipates going to a first-floor unit and a second and third-floor unit, or?
No, so it will, the commercial unit will be retained.
Yeah.
And then two dwelling units above it.
Okay, one on the second floor, one on the third floor?
They're not, tell me if I've got this right, they're not changing anything, they're just trying to get approval for the two units that already exist upstairs.
Okay.
That's correct. The layout of the building will not change.
You'll get an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, it'll be very helpful.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
So yes, from our understanding, this is just to get the zoning and not to change the actual structure of the building. And again, we do have one variance requested, which is for the minimum lot area, 1500 is required, 1395 is provided. That's a variance of 105 square feet, or about 7%. And of course, there's no off-street or conversion standards. And having that secondary entrance is a peculiar situation that isn't commonly found on properties in the area. So.
Did, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The history, and I'm looking at the staff board as well, the applicant previously applied to BMZA for a conversion. BMZA, as you said, doesn't have that authority. Was there an application for variance at the BMZA as well? Were they both applied for?
Yes. So at the BMZA, they applied for the neighborhood commercial establishment, which was approved because that lies, that authority relies with the BMZA. They also applied for the variance and the conversion, which the board found they do not have the power to grant, so they denied that, that application.
Okay. All right, well, let's, shall we bring the applicant up and fill in the blanks here? Without anybody, questions of staff who can obviously stay there as well? You are the applicant, I take it?
I am.
Since you've been, yes, please come on up. If you'd like, just identify yourself for the record.
Sure. My name is Bashir Abdallah, and I'm the owner of the property, yes.
So let's just, walk us through the whole thing.
Okay.
What's going on here?
So a little history. So I purchased this property back in 2003, and we purchased it as a bar in the bottom floor. It was operated as a, you know, a retail bar. And above that, there were two apartments. And we continued to operate it for about three years that way. And then we decided that a bar does not work for us. It's just against moral ethics. So we shut down the bar, we sold the liquor license, and we proceeded just to rent the two apartments upstairs for the last 18, 19 years now. And I've went through the city and a correction on his statement that I do have the permits for the two apartments to give me through. Recently, in the last two years, we decided that we want to redo that whole building, you know? But we wanted to continue to have the first floor as a retail and to have these two apartments, of course. And we did the design and everything, and architects and the whole nine yards, and submitted to the city. The city came back and said, hey, you're not zoned for two apartments upstairs, you need to apply for variance. So wait a minute, we've been, we've been operating that way for the last 20 years, what's changed? So well, that's, you know, it's nine-hour record, there's two apartments. So we went through the BMZA and all that stuff, and that's why we are here today. They approved the retail because it was already a retail place. They couldn't approve the two apartments to legalize those, basically, and continue with the, you know, permit process to get the building renovated and extended and do all what we wanted to do. And we're here today just to get those two apartments approved. And the structure of the building itself, yeah, is going to be changed in the sense, not the operation itself, but in the sense it's going to be an addition that's, you know, we're looking to make an addition on the building and make it look presentable and fit within the neighborhood profile that's there right now. Currently, across the street, there is, you know, bars, as you know, Cross Street Market and, you know, just live neighborhood all night long, so. And it kind of like, if you look at the block, I don't understand how those three buildings were made to residential when everything else is commercial, but, you know, it is what it is. So that's why I'm here today. Any questions?
So you have tenants in the two apartments?
Yes, sir.
Currently? And they would remain through some sort of renovation process? Or is all your, all your work going to be at the commercial level?
No, the work will be in the entire building. There will be, when they're, when we're approved and we have a permit, and when their lease expires, we would, you know, let them go and we would rebuild and, you know, go from there.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions of the applicant? Thank you for the clarification. Are there questions of the applicant? Okay. Any further questions of staff? Okay. Is there a motion to accept, to adopt the findings and to accept the staff's recommendation or approve the conditionally used conversion?
Move this up, the staff recommendation and move findings.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Madam Executive Secretary, please.
Yes, Commissioner Allen.
Approve.
Commissioner Bullock.
Approve.
Commissioner Griffin.
Approve.
Commissioner Jolyn.
Approve.
Commissioner McCouch.
Approve.
Commissioner Williams.
Approve.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Approve.
Mr. Chair.
Approve. And I think you probably know this, but as I said, and I don't typically go through the whole procedure, but as I said to the gentleman before, obviously, it's a recommendation to the council, the bill will go back to the council, you'll have to appear there in due course. Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Right, well, I know Eric, he says, a keeper of the list of things to fix. This zoning code provision has been bothering me. I wish I had made them fix it because the conversion is intended, if one is converted from single-family to not single-family, it already was not single-family, had retail on the ground floor. This is where the BMZA's interpretation has changed over the years. So it's like, they shouldn't, they should not need this ordinance process. So we should either tell the BMZA to change their interpretation or.
Ms. Audette, could you just make a note of that, and we'll figure out how to discuss it? I'm sure the deputy mayor would be happy to talk to you about it further. Okay. All right, so we are moving, Madam Executive Secretary, the next item, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item number seven, Amendment to the North Harbor Area of Special Sign Control, additional billboard, 11th District, and Caitlin Audette presenting.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Today, the amendment to the North Harbor Area Special Sign Control is to add two digital billboards to the sign plan. My name is Caitlin Audette. The petitioner is Onsite Advertising Services. There are two different owners, one for each building, and this is in the downtown planning district for which I am the community planner. So just some background on ASSC's and billboards. Per Section 17, 501, the city recognizes that certain areas present a unique character that can be enhanced with the application of sign standards. And so basically, there are a limited number of ways to get billboards within the city, one of which is through the designation of an area of special sign control, which occurred in North Harbor in 2023.
No, sorry.
Yeah. Sorry, my thing stopped working all of a sudden. There we go. The planning commission must make findings of fact that the amendment to the signage plan meets these three criteria. One, that it would not increase the likelihood of traffic congestion or distraction. Two, that it would not add to the visual clutter in the area. And three, that it would not be incongruous with the existing or contemplated design of the area. Additionally, the signage plan must include several items, so a list of the sign types, the location and number of signs per lot or building, the maximum dimensions per sign, and the percent deviation being sought. And here are the boundaries for the North Harbor Area Special Sign Control, and the two dots show where the two proposed signs would be located. And so this is the signage table. I recognize it's difficult to read. I'll get into the details for each sign momentarily. Let's go. No. I don't know. Okay. So the first sign under review is at 2 Hopkins Plaza. This proposal requests the installation of one side, one sign on the west elevation of the building, which would be facing CFG Arena. The sign would be 50-foot high by 26-feet wide with a total square footage of 1,300 square feet. The sign would be located 60-feet above the ground. So.
Oh, and that one, that's a nitpicky. Is the 60-feet, I guess, from the top of the sign?
From the bottom of the sign.
So maybe the rendering is wrong?
Potentially.
Yeah. Not that, I mean, I guess, I wouldn't object to it being taller, but, or where it is, or 60-feet, but.
So you can see, hold on, let's go back one.
Well.
Oh, and actually changed.
Maybe we had 60-feet, but it can't be 60-feet, actually, no.
How many can you stack? You know what, the applicant's, the applicant is on the line.
They say the bottom is 60-feet.
All right, all right.
And he can clarify this so that we can get the correct numbers in the sign plan, because that is critical, because that's what I review permits against. But we can allow the applicant, his representative is in the room, and the applicant is on line as well. Sorry, I don't know why it's not working.
I have a question for Kevin.
On that spreadsheet that you had, if you could go back to that, that would be helpful. Could you explain the percentage of variation column in that?
Maybe. Okay.
There we go. Max percentage deviation.
What's that mean?
So that allows you to have up to 50% of the deviation, to deviate up to 50% for the sign area?
And we're deviating, so is this saying that this is 75% over?
This is, they're not requesting any deviation.
Okay.
So the max deviation for the area, that's how much they're allowed to have, and they're not requesting any. So you can see the last, so the second to last column is requested deviations, and you can see that there's none.
Correct.
And I will say here that their height from ground is different as well in this document. So that's a great question to ask the applicant. And maybe we'll move forward eventually. Okay, so for the findings of fact, the proposed sign is located to be visible to vehicles traveling east on Baltimore Street, above ground level. There is no evidence to suggest the sign would be disruptive or distracting. The proposed sign would be located directly opposite the CFG Arena, which includes large-scale digital billboards. Note that these are not part of the ASSC because they're on a city-owned building, they have different requirements. Given this proximity and the size of the proposal, we do find that would create limited visual clutter as people travel on Hopkins Plaza, Liberty Street, or Baltimore Street. However, this location does not impact any residential properties or face opposite any office space. So we find that this is an appropriate location for this level of visual clutter. And I will say that we have a definition of visual clutter that states that basically that, you know, what might constitute visual clutter in one area may not constitute visual clutter in another area, so we don't find an issue with this finding of fact. And then for design, the proposed sign is located on an unadorned elevation of the building, with the only visual interest being the material joints that run horizontally along the elevation, as well as the two vertical masses that are separated by a narrow relief. The proposed sign will be located on the northernmost of those vertical elements and aligned with the horizontal material joints, and the applicant has modified the design to meet these requests from staff. The second sign would be located at 221 West Lombard Street. The proposal requests the installation of a single 16-foot wide by 20-foot-high digital billboard on the south elevation of the building, which is an open-air garage. The sign would face the lower levels of 250 West Pratt Street, which appear to be composed of office space. The sign would be located 20-feet above the ground. I will say, these numbers again seem to be slightly off. Thanks, Justin. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Could you go back to the photo?
Do you not think this is 20-feet either?
No, it's fine. Does the static banner behind it require a permit?
It is supposed to, yes. All signs, regardless of what is on them, are supposed to, per the zoning code, get a permit. I will say that banners like that generally do not, and there is very little enforcement.
In the context of visual clutter, does that banner stay with the new sign? Or is that?
It is my understanding that it would not stay, as it would be less visible to the folks that it would be trying to, you know, advertise to.
I think we'll put that into the, we should ask the applicant category.
Enforcement is complaint-driven, so if a complaint were submitted.
Well, I don't think it's a matter of complaint. I think it's a matter of condition of approval, but we'll get there when we.
Yeah, it's a finding of fact, if you would consider that visual clutter or not.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
So for traffic impact, the proposed sign is located to be visible to vehicles traveling north on Howard Street. Again, there's no evidence to suggest that the sign would be disruptive or distracting. For visual clutter, the proposed sign will not be visible along with any other proposed or existing digital billboards. It is located in an area without an abundance of signage or other types of visual clutter, and as such, the proposed sign would not create visual clutter, in my opinion. Design, the proposed sign is located on an unadorned elevation of the building. The only visual interest is the vertical structural bays and horizontal floor levels, and the proposed sign would extend over a setback portion of those floor levels. The proposed sign is aligned with the structural bays and those horizontal floor bays per staff's request, which the applicant was happy to meet. The following groups were notified via email, along with over 100 individual residents, the City Center Residents Association, Downtown Residents Advocacy Network, Downtown Partnership of Baltimore, Market Center Merchants Association, and postings were placed at both properties. Planning has received letters of support from both property owners as well as Downtown Partnership. Staff recommends that the commission adopt the findings of fact and approve. Any questions?
Well, I do, but it sounds like other folks have questions. Commissioner Jolyn, please.
I do. Thanks, Caitlin. I'm curious, visual clutter, I understand like the definition difference for each of them, but how are we feeling collectively about how many signs we want to put in an ASSC? I believe this is now including the.
11.
CFG ones, 19.
Oh, potentially.
Yep.
The Law Department has stated that we cannot necessarily limit, so like, what one property owner, limit, the property owner's rights to a certain extent. So we can't say that there's like a max amount, and we also can't put limitations based off of like, they can only be every 300-feet from one another. So we are using the design standards as kind of our method to help limit that. So these findings of fact are how we're utilizing a way to limit it. I will say, we don't want to bring these to you all every month. This is very much, I think the goal is to limit these so that we're doing a couple, maybe whenever they come up together. I wouldn't even want to say annually. I don't, I don't think anybody wants there to be a proliferation of digital billboards. And that's why, you know, oftentimes, when I'm looking at visual clutter, I'm talking about their visibility along with other digital billboards in that view shed. Doesn't really answer your question, but to say that we can't necessarily put like a cap on it, because that would limit, and I'm not a lawyer, but like, you know, the potential property rights of those owners, so. Does that help at all?
It helps very much, yes, thank you.
So, Kate, I was going to ask naively if there was a cap on the number of billboards under the area special sign control, and I'm hearing no. So if this is approved, then we would expect other people to apply.
Yep.
And be approved.
Yep.
And more people to apply.
And so, I mean, I, at the moment, we are not seeing that. There's nothing to say that that's going, that that couldn't change. But we do then rely on these findings of fact to help protect, protect us, or, you know, maintain what, how we want downtown to be. And I think there might be differing opinions on what that should be. Some folks may want to have, have that proliferation of digital billboards. I will say, we are updating our design manual. And for those of you who were here back in 2023, you may recall that we reviewed some proposed updates to the design manual specifically for digital billboards, talking about facing into residential units and those kinds of limitations that would add to the findings of fact. And so it is our intention to include those into the design manual updates that you'll be seeing hopefully this fall. And that would further add like layers of protection, so that, you know, the big one is we don't want these facing, there's nothing right now saying they can't face into a residential property. And I don't necessarily think that's appropriate, right? And other, other location-specific details. So I think that that will be a layer of protection, but...
Well, just, it seems to me, since we just approved an area of special sign control adjacent to the Ravens Stadium, right? If I'm hearing now that that legislation doesn't actually offer us protections that we thought that it might have, I have a real hard time in the future approving additional areas of special sign control, because it's not, it's not really working.
Yeah, and I will say for that one specifically, they did add additional language that would limit where it could be located, right? But it's definitely cause for concern.
Yeah. Thanks. I appreciate that insight.
I have a couple of questions. Are there other questions from the commissioners of the staff? And then we'll deal with applicants and questions and so on.
I don't want to, but you can go.
No, go ahead.
Are there rules, I should know this, under the digital brightness, visual signage brightness?
There are rules, yes.
Are they enforceable by us with our technology that we possess?
Not by me.
Yeah.
They hopefully are enforceable by code enforcement, but I don't know that to date. I will say that we are lucky in that where there have been complaints about brightness, those have been addressed by the various owners. So an example is that there is one billboard that faces directly into GSA's offices. And they complained, the Downtown Partnership, as well as the owner of the digital billboard in question, worked to modify that during work hours, so that it was less obtrusive to those employees.
Is that the same one as a courthouse? Because I got a complaint about the one facing the courthouse, and then I was at the convention center, and it was signed for Kramer.
That was not, so it depends on what court, so I know there are some courts in the federal building, but this was specifically to the federal building.
So, maybe it's a different one, that's, I hadn't, they stopped emailing me, so maybe it got resolved in similar fashion, which is nice. But that's something, I guess, for us to think about how we could enforce that or compel compliance. That's all. So not really comments of my comments.
No, that's fine. Others? Okay, so a couple of things. You know, I guess I find, I suppose, returning to this question, people are probably going to get used, either used to or annoyed by hearing it, which is, who's responsible for what? At what point in the process and with what standards, right? I mean, it's just sort of fundamental to me about like, who's, you know, so we talked earlier about, you know, what's a recommendation, what, you know, what's not, what, what's authority, what's not. So I'm trying to synthesize what, what we're hearing, what we're doing here with your comments about the design manual. So here's what I think it is, and I just wanted to ask you what you thought and see what other people think. I think that these findings are the planning commission's job to make with staff input and public testimony and so on. And if we don't make them, you can't have a sign in the area of special sign control. But any sign in the area of special sign control, also, if approved, has to meet design standards. You could do it either way. You could say it has to meet the design standards and don't bring it to the planning commission.
Yeah.
Or you could say the planning commission is going to say you can have a sign, here's what it looks like, and then all the details, and I don't remember what those are, but you've alluded to them, about, I don't know, I forget what they are. If it's Blink Raid, or Lumens, or whatever it might be. So they're two, they're two different things, and it's no different really than anything else, where the commission is approving something, but the sort of details are assumed to be covered by the staff as part of a design review, which is in the code, within a design manual that we, that we approved, but at the end of the day, we delegated that to the staff. And so the two have to come together, right? You have staff review of the design manual that we approved, you have these, these threshold findings that have to be made under the code, and to sort of meet, and if, you, you have to do both in order to get a sign.
You do have to do both, but there is an order that they have to happen in. So you have to meet the design manual before first, before you can come to the planning commission, only because that table specifies where it's going to be located. And that is a table that the permits are going to be reviewed against. So you, you don't have the wiggle room from planning commission to differ from what's in that table, those dimensions. So you could theoretically ask for a much bigger sign at planning commission, get approval, and then shrink it, and play around with placement within that general approved, what planning commission approved, envelope, right?
Right.
But you can't go the other way around, so.
Right, so that's helpful, and that's, sounds actually quite correct, so that's helpful. But should the commission assume that when a staff, when the staff brings something like this to us, to deal with the three findings with your recommendation, that it is already determined that the proposal that we're seeing meets the other, the other standards in the design manual? Because as you just said, it goes there first in order to be...
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we've, what I've done since handling these, which there might be a better way of doing it, but there are the three findings of fact, one of which talks about design. And so I've utilized that third finding of fact to kind of connect it with the design manual.
Okay. I think that's fine, and I accept that, and I, I support it. I just want to, you know, I think we're all, you don't see these super often, and we don't necessarily want to see them all the time, as you said. So just trying to figure out, okay, so does that, I don't know if that's helpful, if that matters to anybody, but it was helpful for me just to kind of understand how we're approaching this. But the other thing, this is very micro, is the, the staff report, and you and I discussed this, Ms. Odette, the staff report, and I think it's just a typo, with respect to the Two Hopkins Plaza sign, says, under the visual clutter item, I'll just read it, it's only two sentences. "The proposed sign will be located directly opposite CFG Arena, which includes large-scale digital billboards that are not part of the ASC. Given this proximity and the size of the proposal, this would create visual clutter as people travel on Hopkins Plaza, Liberty Street, or Baltimore Street." So I assume that that is intended to say will not create visual clutter, or at least won't create sufficient visual clutter to sort of, to sort of, you know, allow us not to make the finding, because soon, right after that, you say staff recommends approval.
Yeah, so I, like, I think I shared with you a sentence is missing. And what's what I've elaborated on in the presentation, which is that there is visual clutter, but not the extent that would not allow the sign to meet the findings of fact.
Yeah, I, I would, I mean, I think we're having this discussion on the record, so it's clear. I do think that there should be some written documentation of this, this, you know, just going forward.
Yep.
Just to make sure, and I understand what you're saying, there's a, but there's sort of a fine line between there's no visual clutter, or there's not sufficient visual clutter. And I think we probably need to think about how to, how to present that. I guess in some instances, you would say there is just no visual clutter. Another instance, you would say, well, sure, there's visual clutter, but it's, it is, and I think you, you use the, you, forgive me for, it says, that you have a definition of visual clutter. From where does that come?
We made it up during the first ASC, so.
Right, okay.
And we keep going back to it, because, well, we're consistent if nothing else.
Right, and so what I was, what I was driving towards was the last sentence, what might constitute visual clutter in one context may be appropriate in another, which sounds, which also sounds correct.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so with all of that, let's, I assume there are applicants here who wish to be heard on the subject of the signs. Mr. Greenfield, do you want to come up?
Yes.
Will you identify yourself?
Then Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I'll prep that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the commission. Aaron Greenfield here on behalf of Skyline Media. First, want to thank Ms. Odette for her support and guidance in kind of helping us go through this process, which I know from the discussion is fairly new, and so she's been incredible. I'd also like to thank Shalonda Stokes and Pat Terranova from the Downtown Partnership. You should have a letter of support from the Downtown Partnership in your file. I will also make mention, we did meet with the Center City Residents Association, who legitimately had concerns about light shining on residential properties. Neither of these signs, to our knowledge, do that. And so we did supply them with a lot of response and back and forth, and had a very robust conversation. I am joined, though, most importantly, by my client, Mr. Kirk Becker, straight out of Oregon, who is online to answer some of the more technical questions that were raised, particularly posed by the deputy mayor.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Great. Sorry, I apologize for not being there in person. Also, that my camera, I can't get my camera quite working, and I bought a brand-new shirt for this, too. I, I'd like to take a minute to thank Caitlin also. She, she's worked tirelessly over the last number of months. But my, my name's Kirk Becker, and I, I am the managing member for onsite advertising and Skyline Media. We're, we're a 25-year-old nationwide out-of-home company, not unlike some of the other companies that have built other signs. We, we're excited, we've worked for quite a number of months on this project. We're very excited to be able to call Baltimore home, if we're able to add these two signs. We, we've, we've worked with, with Caitlin on reducing the size, actually, the number of signs and the orientation. And as, as Aaron said, we, the downtown neighborhood helped us there, too. We've, we've actually reduced our total signage by over 60% in area through the last few months in working on this. So I, I think what we've landed on is, is a really good set of signs, perfect for the district. They're going to be smaller than most in the district, yet they'll be integral pieces in the network to, to add value and opportunity in the, in Baltimore City. They'll be obviously a boon for the local businesses, and we, we are excited to be able to produce art and work with other nonprofits in the area. So, you know, as, as we move forward, we want to be a bigger part of the city and the community, add value, and just be positive contributors to it. So we're, we're open to any questions. I listened, I wanted to raise my hand to, to help Caitlin out on a couple of things when we were talking about the size and orientation at Hopkins Plaza, with the height above ground level, 60 feet and whatnot. But if, if anybody has any questions, we're here to answer them right now.
Hi, John Laria here. Can you, let's go back to the last thing about the, just that factual question about the sign, height above ground level, the 60 feet. Can you just clarify for us? Because we're having a hard time figuring that out.
Yeah, yeah, our, yeah, the industry, you know, haggle, height above ground level or, or haggle, talks to the top of the sign above the ground. So the 60 feet, and I don't, I have to scroll in here to look at what that says. But we had, our original version for Two Hopkins was side-by-side signs. And, and again, this is where coming, comes together with working with Caitlin and the director, Director Ryer. Not only did we, we shorten those a little bit, we took one whole sign off. In the code, we were allowed to have quite a bit more signage, and I think there was another question about deviation. Even by doubling that size and having two side-by-side signs, there, I don't think we were going to ask for any deviation, yet we, we took that down from two signs, the one you're looking at now, and one right next to it, and reduced that by half. So back to your, your point, the 60 feet above ground level, we, we made the top of the sign at the exact breakpoint of one of the floors on the, on the, in the, in the apartments. So we had asked Caitlin to let us add, I think, eight or 10 feet, Caitlin, to the bottom of the sign to get some square footage back where we lost the whole sign, so.
I don't, sorry, I think that's fine, that you've, you've answered my question, which is, where do you measure? It just raises another question for, it just raises this question for me. The second sign in the memo says 20 feet above ground level, and surely the top of that sign is not at 20 feet above ground level, because it's on the 1, 2, 3, 4, fourth floor of a parking garage. So I'm, I'm really, my issues are not conceptual, they're literally like mathematical, like, like precision. Like, we ought to be precise about this, and I'm frustrated by the fact that we just don't seem to have, working with the same, same numbers. It's very straightforward.
I can help out here and say that we're going to change these numbers, and this would need to be part of your motion, so please accept this kind of friendly staff amendment, which would be to change the height from ground for the first sign on Hopkins Plaza to 20 feet, and to change the height from ground for the second sign at Lombard to 18 feet above ground.
Well, that's, I mean, that may be, that may be correct, but it's also not the way the industry measures height above ground level. So we're sort of creating, you know...
But unfortunately, yeah, I mean, so when we just, we are not part of the industry. When this was created, all the other signs do the height from ground as the difference between the ground floor and the bottom of the sign. So we want these to match the rest of the signs that are in this table that are for the entire area of special sign control. Does that make sense? So while it may not be the industry standard, until we change all of the signs, there, it would be an inappropriate change. Do you understand?
I, I do understand, but I don't like it, but I understand.
Sorry.
The, the, you're suggesting that that middle column of height from ground, you're, you would suggest amending that in our motion to be...
The 70 and 22, 70 and 22, actually, I apologize.
72.
22.
It'd be 70?
Oh, sorry, 20 and 22. I apologize.
Not 20 and 18, you said a moment ago, 20 and 18.
Yeah, my mouth was wrong.
So you're suggesting that this table, if adopted as part of this motion, would have in that column 20 feet and 18 feet?
That's correct, and just, just to match what is utilized in the rest of the plan.
So I have one other question about this table. There are two columns that say maximum percent deviation for area. Can you help me understand why there are two columns that have the same caption?
Because one, one is looking at the area for the new sign, and one is looking at the max cumulative sign area. So if you see, they are each immediately after a column talking about area. So you have the one for the specific sign.
Right.
And that's at the fifth column, and then you have the one at towards the end, and that is for the cumulative sign area.
Why, but then it says no requested deviation.
So, yeah, so in that last, second to last column, if there was a requested deviation, we would state where it was for.
But, I'm sorry, forgive me, but...
So the deviation, those percentages are what's allowed. Max allowed deviation for area. So they are allowed to have a deviation of up to 75% for the individual signs, and they are allowed to have a deviation of up to 50% for the max cumulative area. They are not requesting any deviations.
The max cumulative area would, would include his, the panels, the temporary sign, and this, they would count toward a global figure, which is, I'm sure, way under 7,000 square feet. But if it were over, then they could request the deviation from the...
So an example of where we have had that is the former Transamerica Building. They did request deviation for their max cumulative sign area because of the amount of signage they have on their property.
I have one more comment that John's also going to like, because I'm looking at the zoning code, the definition of height, if our sign calculation does match the industry standard, so I think it's just our sign table from the sign control, from, from last time, when someone put that through from Downtown Partnership, that had the wrong methodology. So maybe at some point, the exercise would be to update it or standardize the methodology.
Can, can, can the applicant or representative just comment on this? There's two signs on the garage question, the banner, the static banner and the digital sign, which you've heard discussed. Anybody, I know you don't own the building, but let's go back to the image, if you would.
Sure, I, I mean, I, those banners are, by nature, are temporary. I, I've, I know that particular banner has been there quite a while, and before that, it was a same-size banner, but different, different copy. I'm not so sure that add that banner to our sign, and we still are under, I mean, there, and, and again, I'm not the property owner. It'll be a question that I can ask the property owner. But I'm not sure that we're over the allotted amount of signage with that banner stays. And I'm not so sure that they won't take that down if asked, especially if you're going to make it a, a, something that needs to be done to get this approved. But I'm not sure that, I'm not sure once it's over.
It's apples and oranges here, because the numbers we're talking about today are digital signage numbers, and that banner is a, subject to sort of more ordinary signage requirements.
No, no, they are the same. So for the max cumulative, we are looking for all signage on that building.
I think in our application, we added every sign on that parking structure, which means the enter here signs, the, the square signs that say park here. We, we added everything and accumulated all signage for, for both sites.
What, what I would ask, if I may.
You may.
Is if we're going to approve this, I think we should ask that any unpermitted signage be removed from the building. If they want, and the temporary nature, that's probably not a problem. If they'd like to keep it, they can go through the proper channels.
Okay. Okay. Other questions or comments?
Another one, and I don't know if you can answer it or don't know the answer. Another one, and I don't know if you can answer it, or don't know the answer. I'm assuming the parking garage is in separate ownership entirely from the office building.
Yes.
They don't have signage of their own. I'm thinking ahead of, because there are, those office, those windows are relatively close, and even if you're an office worker having light shine in, it's not that ideal. I'm saying that as somebody who likes more signage and likes more billboards generally. So I'm thinking aloud if it made sense to get some way of buy-in, but I don't know. I think we don't necessarily need that. And I guess DPOB can help mediate between the ownership if that gets to that point.
All right. Well, let's focus on our job here for the moment. Our job, we have before us a recommendation from the staff to approve these plans as submitted. I have three amendments to that, or supplements, or augmentations. One of them is to just acknowledge that the, the reference to no clutter would be, would be revised in the permanent record and the staff report. The two is that the, that the, the table would be amended to say 20 feet and 20, what was it, 20, 22 feet for the two respective signs, the first being Hopkins, and the second one being Lombard Street, and the third being that any unpermitted signage on any of the two buildings would be removed until such time as appropriate permits are issued. And maybe they are, but we don't know.
Mr. Chair, could you, a number on point two, you said 20?
20 and 22, is what I, I'm just taking what Ms. Odette said, that we, so we changed the two numbers in the table.
Okay.
To 20 and 22. Are there other specific changes that anybody would like to include in, as part of an approval that we might make? Okay. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept the staff report, to adopt the findings of fact that are in the staff report, and to approve subject to the three items that I just mentioned, which I'm not going to say again, because I think they're clearly enough for the record. Is there a motion to that effect? And we can have further discussion about it, but is there a motion to that effect?
If there's no discussion, I'll make the motion.
Well, let's make the motion. We can talk about it afterwards, but.
Motion to adopt the findings and the chair's amendments and approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, we moved in second. Is there any further discussion before we vote on the motion that's been made? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Yes, okay.
No, sorry.
Madam Executive Secretary.
Commissioner Allen.
Approved.
Commissioner Bullock.
Approved.
Commissioner Griffin.
Approved.
Commissioner Jolyn.
Approved.
Commissioner McCouch.
Disapprove.
Sorry. Commissioner Williams.
Approved.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Approved.
Mr. Chair.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion carries. I don't know what the numbers were there, but I think we have enough votes.
Yes.
The motion carries. So thank you very much for doing that, and thanks for working through it. Ms. Odette, Madam, Madam Executive Secretary, I think that we probably need to have some, some discussion about this, concern about, you know, where this is headed, and how many, and what, what, where there might be either objective or subjective limitation, all the things that we've talked about. It seems to me that this discussion reveals a number of different questions about, about the sort of concept of these areas. We may continue to see them. So we can, we can talk about it separately, staff and the commission, but I think it's worth a little bit of, of, you know, discussion about where, how we're thinking of this, and how the staff is presenting it and so on. Okay? Good. All right. That was the last item on the regular agenda, was it not?
Yes.
It was. Okay. Well, having said that, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Who's name? We adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, sir.